I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Boothby Harbor Planning Board Meeting. This evening, we have an application in front of us. It's the first public hearing for the fish pier. And then there'll be a review and approval of our previous meeting minutes. Any discussion amongst the board members about reviewing land use codes? And then any general discussions and adjournments? So with that stated, we'll mention tonight that we have a full board here able to hold a meeting. We'll introduce our members. I'm Michael Tomko, I'm the chair.
John Hoepstein.
Chris Swanson.
Tom Churchill.
We have three regular members, Tom, myself, and John. And because Chris is an alternate member, would like to take a vote among the three full members to raise Chris to a full member this evening so that he can participate and be a voting member. So do I have a motion to do that?
So move.
Second? Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Chris, you're in tonight. Thank you very much. Why don't we start off then with our first application, which is the public hearing of the fish pier? I'll ask that because Kelly Biggs, our recording secretary, is not here, that anyone that is addressing the board, please identify yourself by your name and so that we've got a good record of that. And other than that, let's go ahead and get started. Why don't we begin by having our town manager give us a brief review of the application? Ask maybe for a little bit history about what took place, where are we today, and where we're going to go forward.
Okay, great. I'm Mr. Tom Wood.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, no problem. Just before I do that, I just wanted you to be aware that I left at each of your stations a current site plan with all the changes that Tom Churchill requested, such as setbacks and things such as that. I've also given you an 11-by-17 set of drawings for construction. And after submitting the application a couple of weeks ago, several of you had questions, and I replied to those via email, and I put copies of those in for you as well, just in case if you hadn't gotten an email. To give a little history, the fish pier property, as some of you know, was purchased around 1985. It's been part of the working waterfront in the harbor since then. It's in a marine zone, and it's used as intended just for marine purposes. It has three tenants in it at this point. It has Atlantic Edge, Boothby Marine Services, and Harbor Bait. And recently, we have gotten to the point where a couple of the buildings that were there were not even insurable anymore, and we had to make a decision. So a year or so ago, we put a couple of referendum questions out to the public, asking if we could spend a certain amount of money to renovate the fish pier. Those were both approved, and since then, we've worked with the new tenant, Harbor Bait, to come up with a plan for when we tear those buildings down, which we have done, what we replace them with to satisfy the needs of that business, and improve the property as a whole. So what you have before you is our proposal for a 60-by-80-foot building. It's a story and a half, and it sits primarily on -- well, we have actually put a slab that's going to sit on now. We filled in the area of the pier where the red building was, we built that up to the standards of another section of pier, so it can handle heavy loads, can handle deliveries of 18-wheelers. The majority of the pier can't handle that weight, so that section is crucial for these truck deliveries. We have built a cement pad there in anticipation of this plan being approved. And so what you have before you is the 60-by-80-foot building that is intended to house Harbor Bait.
Terrific. Tom, can you just mention for the benefit of the board and others, the process that you and the selectmen went through in order to come up with this ultimate design? There were workshops, there were multiple meetings, things like that?
It's been multiple years, quite frankly. Yeah, we've been doing this for 10 or 11 years as a town, but when we finally have gotten to this stage, in the last few years, we had a study done by Guran Turgeon Associates as to how to maximize that property, because we knew we were eventually getting to this point where we had to take action. And so they were entrusted with coming up with a plan for how to lay out this property that would be best for the tenants, best for traffic flow. They did a very good job, but what they came up with was over $2 million worth of improvements, and we thought that might be a little high right now for the taxpayers. So we sat down and sort of went back to the drawing board ourselves and said, "What else can we do here that accomplishes the same thing but doesn't put up the Taj Mahal?" And so when the negotiations with Kettlefish broke down, we were working with that tenant at that point to do this type of project with them. When those negotiations broke down and he left, Chuck and Gene came in and were interested in taking over that bait business in that location. And so for the last, I don't know how many months, six months maybe, we've been getting together for workshops and so forth to figure out what would work best for refrigeration down there, the location of the building, the size, maximizing parking, improving the site visibility at entrances and so forth. And that's what you have before you.
Okay. And I realize that there are a number of compromises that were made along the way, not wanting to spend the several million dollars to improve the entire deck and balance that with neighbors, abutters, interests. And so you're comfortable that this is, while it's a compromise plan, if maybe I can call it that, it's one that you think that the town can stand behind and feel good about its location and its design?
I think it's a great improvement, yeah. I mean, it's smaller in its total square footage than what was there before, but what was there before was very awkwardly laid out, and there was a lot of wasted space there. This is a much more efficient use of that space. One of the biggest concerns that we've had putting this together, and one of the issues that I hear as town manager is the complaints about noise out at the street, and trucks sitting there idling and being unloaded at the street. So that was a priority when we put this plan together, was to get that truck off the street and get it down off the road alongside the building so it didn't bother the neighbors. And the brand-new repaired section of the pier, which is reinforced to handle that, was the ideal location to do that. We considered the other side as well, but that interfered with the public boat ramp. So its location was put on the other side.
Okay. And just finally, for my benefit and as well as other members of the board, is there anything in particular that jumps out in terms of the plan here that's different from the previous plan that we had? I know only things were added, and maybe you could just make sure that we're all aware of that.
The plan is exactly the same, except for the three or four things that Tom mentioned, such as putting on there the 15-foot setbacks. I think there's a dotted line showing you where the previous buildings were. Tom, help me out here, I don't remember what the other thing is.
The other was the, where the reinforced deck ends and the structurally less capable deck. And that is, can you help me figure out where that is? Because I'm...
Tom, the part that says demolished part of the master building?
Yeah.
That is exactly where the reinforced deck is.
That's exactly where that was.
The building and the reinforced deck with the same footprint.
I see where the buildings used to be, but I was looking for the, what part of the dock is...
Reinforced is this building here, this rectangle.
Just that rectangle?
Yep, just that rectangle.
Is reinforced, okay.
Because that building sat on pilings, didn't have cement under it, it has a cement floor, but it's set on pilings. So when that building came out, we rebuilt that section.
That work was done in the spring, as I recall.
Yes.
And then for the benefit of our recording secretary, that was Bill Hamblin, who chimed in. No problem. I feel because this is a, this comes in under our site plan review, that probably the best and most efficient way to go through this application is to use what we have as called as a findings of fact. And this basically is a list of all of the criteria land use code requires for commercial structures such as this. And in that way, if we review this, we're able to go through, find out where the application meets the criteria, and if there are questions, they're parallel along with our land use code. And then afterwards, if there are general questions, we can go ahead and address that. Also, if we have questions from the abutters or any other interested parties. So if the board's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Main municipal has asked us actually to follow this method of doing findings of fact. So while it seems at some point repetitive and detailed, it does cover basis of what we're legally required to do. So with that started, I will just mention that the owner of this property is the town of Boothby Harbor at 69 Atlantic Avenue, and the deed to the project has been seen and recorded at the Lynn County Registry of Deeds. The property contains one commercial structure. Let's see, the applicant, is that technically correct, Jeff? Can we say that the property, or in terms of the purpose of this application, we're only talking about one commercial structure?
Well, I suppose that it contains two or three, depending.
The entire property does, but this application's...
Yes.
So maybe I'll just amend that to say, this application pertains to one commercial structure. Does that seem fair? And that the applicant proposes construction of the new building, which a tenant will operate a bait business from. That all is correct? So to start off, do we have evidence that the applicant has the right title and interest in this party, or in this property? Is that, that's correct?
You have that in your application.
Right.
Do you have deed to the applicant?
Let's move on to the review criteria and talk about the first, which is utilization of the site. And I'm just going to paraphrase. Basically, this states that the plan for the building reflect the natural capabilities of the site, environmentally sensitive areas, wetlands, flops, floodplains, wildlife, fisheries, scenic areas have all been kept in mind, natural drainage has been preserved to the maximum extent, and development must be appropriate. Seeing as this was a previous bait business and previous use, maritime resource-dependent use, I don't view that there's any change in that. Board seem fine with that? Great. Next is traffic access. And we talk about adequacy of the road. We're asked to consider that the property is able to support enough peak trips, and that entrances are clearly marked and functional. I'm just a bit wordy here. We have in our application the number of vehicle trips, and I believe it was asked at the last meeting, or the average number of trucks per day that were going to be visiting the site. That was on page seven here. Section seven.
I think they addressed that.
Good enough. It has been answered. Thanks, Tom.
And it's not a significant change from what they were doing before?
Very good.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. What did we look at then next, which is access into the site? It says, "The vehicular access to and from the development must be safe and convenient." Driveway and proposed street must be designed to provide minimum site distance as required. Point of egress access must be located to avoid hazardous and conflicting, conflict with existing turns and movements in traffic flow. Grade must be appropriate. Intersections, if any, must function at level of the street. This goes into quite a bit of detail, talking about trips and access. I know that we had talked at the last meeting about the traffic flow and having the vehicles pull in, and maybe you can mention, Tom, again, for the benefit of the board, the plan for the major amount of traffic that comes in and out of the line.
Sure. But that was certainly one of the things that we took into consideration as we put this together, because the previous buildings were fairly close to the road, and this proposed building is considerably farther away from the road. We've also had issues with, when you get to the end and try to pull out, you didn't have site visibility because of the way the parking spaces were, or where some of the boats were at the marine repair place. So when we put this together, we eliminated a couple of parking spots and relocated them so that they didn't interfere with site visibility.
Which ones were those? Can you show us on a plan?
Well, there are ones on the corners.
Or generally where they were on the plan?
Yeah, there's one there, that was taken out, so when you come out.
Okay, so that was one that was gone.
Yeah, and this one, there was one here as well, which was taken out as well. So if someone went out that other way, which we wouldn't recommend, but if they did that, cleared up that site visibility as well.
The flow of traffic has historically gone in on the southerly entrance, the one closest to Seapier, and has gone down around behind what used to be Kettlefish, now Harbor Bait, leaving Atlantic Edge to the left, and then coming out next to the marine repair place. It seems that's the logical way to do that for a couple of reasons, but the main one is because there's a public boat ramp there. And so a lot of people, when they're launching their boat, come down that way so that they're in position when they come to the exit, so they can back down. It's easier for them. Previously, there wasn't much room out by the street to back trailers down for their... If we rerouted traffic down that way, I think you'd have a considerable amount of congestion with cars going in two different directions. So we propose just to leave it the way it was, but just to improve the visibility at the entrance and exits.
Now, this road that you've got shown here with the arrows goes out over a section of the pier that's not been rebuilt, is that correct? So how do you limit the vehicles that go out there? What if somebody comes along and, you know, with an 18-wheeler doesn't know any better, or somebody comes out with what might even be worse, a 10-wheeler, or somebody with a Brunel trailer and a, you know, 20-ton boat, and he wants to use the ramp?
Well, one answer to that is because of the way that property has been in the past, you couldn't get something of that size down there anyway, because it didn't have the swing room.
But you could now.
You could now, but, I mean, we can eliminate that a couple of ways. I mean, one is the only 18-wheeler that's going to come and go from that property is going to be Harbor Bait, so they're going to have their own loading dock. Everyone else that has serviced that pier for years, including oil trucks, things like that, knows exactly how far they can go, and that has not changed. I think it's fairly unlikely someone would go down there with a 20-ton boat, but I mean, maybe we could address that with signage, I don't know. Usually, it's small little craft, and they're...
Yeah, I might add, this is Bill Hamblin, signage is the obvious way, just the way he's proposed a bridge, you know, it's a 15-ton, 20-ton bridge. We would, and we do have plans to put signage down there that, no load of trucks over the weight limit, in other words, inferior than a box truck can go down beyond the hard pack area.
I don't know that that's actually in the application. Is that something that we're considering as a condition of approval?
We've talked about that in the past, but yeah, sure, put it in as a condition, that we have a sign posted that trucks over a certain weight can't go beyond a certain place.
Okay. And you've also talked in the past about differentiating lanes and marking and painting?
Yeah, one of the ideas that we've had, which seems to be amenable to the tenants, is at least for their spots, each tenant has 10 spots, parking spaces, color coding them, so the different businesses had a different color parking spot, that would simplify anyone whose parking spots are whose. The plans that you see there that actually show lines showing a driveway through there, there is no painted driveway there, and that's just sort of to show you where the flow of traffic goes. Right now, it's just all a concrete or paved area. So, and that may be something, you know, once this project is done, that maybe we distinguish where the driving lane is. We've also talked about possibly painting on the deck somewhere where the loading and unloading for the forklift would be going out to the end of the pier and so forth, for the safety of anybody using the pier to go fishing or things such as that.
Okay. That exit drive, though, will be clear, you have boats, you have seven boats down there now with marine, but so that people can get out.
Yeah, our intention there is to, instead of painting just the three lines of most parking spaces, paint all four, and so the requirement will be that nothing larger than the parking space can fit in there.
Excuse me.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Donna Pigott, I wanted to, I'm a neighbor in the area. And as you're talking, it's very hard for you to understand what you're talking about, because there's nothing visual.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Great, and we'll do a, I will try and do a better job of enumerating exactly where we're looking at on the plan. Thank you for your comment. In our code, it talks about design criteria to avoid queuing of entering vehicles on the street. Do you envision that there, either Tom or Bill or the Fullers, envision where vehicles are somehow going to be stacked as...
I think it's been designed to address that issue specifically, so vehicles can get off the road if they can't pull in directly.
Okay. And the plan then is to, as you've stated in the past, to bring the truck, as it's labeled here, HB Harbor Bait, on the south side of the proposed building, and to pull in straight, park there, do loading and unloading in the lee or the shadow of the building, and then to have that vehicle swing back across the front of the building, down to, in between Boothby Marine and by the fish, or by the ramp, and then be able to pivot That seems workable? Do you have data to know that that will work, or...
Oh, we have the space to make it work. It might depend on how good the driver is, but we have the space to make it work.
Okay. Yes?
Is it all right I ask a question?
Sure.
So I, I'm just trying to understand this, and I was on the property today with the harbor master and the co-enforcement officer, Jeff. And we were told that the truck was going to back in, the cab being at the front, and the unloading was going to be occurring more off the street. In other words, just the opposite of what I'm seeing here. The cab was going to be in the front, and it was going to be backing down into the pier. Is that correct?
Jeffrey, Tom?
The intention is for them to drive in. You know, is someone going to be there to absolutely say that someone's not going to back in one time? I mean, if there's a truck coming to pick up lobsters from Atlantic Edge, I'm reasonably sure he's going to back in. It's going to be a smaller truck. I realize that is the way, that is the intended route. Is, are the police going to be there 24/7 making sure that nobody backs in? I don't think we can say that.
No, I guess, I'm sorry. Did you understand? Maybe I didn't express myself. Maybe I did, I'm not understanding. In other words, when the truck comes to, it's going to be unloaded, it's not going to come in like this, it's going to back in, so that the unloading can happen down here, away from the street.
The unloading of the bait trucks happens from the side of it? From the side of the truck, it doesn't happen from the back of the truck? I see, I can see where you are.
Well, I can't ever see.
No, the space between there and the building, it happens off the side, not off the back of the truck. Not up there, no.
So, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
There and there, both sides of the truck.
So not up here?
Not on the end of the truck.
Not on the other truck, no.
Yeah, that, that, it doesn't come...
It doesn't happen off the back of the truck.
Oh, that's good. All right, so he is going to drive down like that?
Yes.
And the unloading happens here?
On both sides of the truck? Between the truck and the building, and between the truck and the edge of the pier.
But not on the ends of the truck?
That's good.
I think that's what's...
It's a flat, it's a flatbed truck.
This is very important to me, because of the noise that we're trying to, and it looks like the town has, you know, really, and it looks like there's been a lot of work done to minimize, and I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate your support there. So in other words, I'm just trying, so the, so it's going, the forklift will be going this way?
The entrance into the cooler will be up here.
So it's not going to go this way?
It's not going to be coming out on the lower side of the building, no.
So it'll be going this way?
No. Yes, yes, it would be coming up this side of the building and entering right here.
All right, I think that explains it, how...
But it may, there's an entrance on the opposite side of the building to the cooler. So there will be times when it's on the other side. Now, I think what you're referring to, what your issues are with the bait, with the forklift going in the middle of the night, is at those times, though, the forklift is going to be going down to the end of the pier, more than it will be going into the cooler from the truck.
Okay, so the truck, the truck will always be coming in on this side, however?
Yes.
And you're saying that the unloading may be happening over here?
No, no.
No, maybe happen down here.
It'll all be unloaded there. It'll be unloaded here, the truck will always be here, but the forklift may travel down to here and back.
Oh, that's all right.
But never out where you're going to be exposed to it.
I think that that will help, I hope, I think so. Thank you.
So, you're welcome. Maybe if we can just sort of recap, what I'm hearing you say and what's been said in the past is that a flatbed trailer is going to pull along the south side of the building, and a forklift will come along parallel to that trailer, and then perpendicularly lift and remove bait off, which would then go either into the building or down to the end of the pier. Have I got that correct? Great. And I can see from the plan here that it appears that the width looks approximately at 48 feet between the edge of the building and the edge of the pier, and that's...
Forty-six.
Sorry.
It'll be precise.
Okay. So it appears to me that, according to this drawing, half of that 46 feet can be dedicated towards a truck and a forklift, and the other half can be left to provide free and safe vehicular access. That would, that'd be a correct assumption?
Yes.
So in reality, the truck can't be positioned as shown on this plan, because there isn't room to get a fork truck between the building and the truck and have it turn. I mean, you've only got four or five feet there.
I probably agree with you, that the truck should be slightly to the south.
So the truck really would be over, probably over at least the width of the truck to the south, and that's where it's going to park?
Not the width of the truck as it's drawn there, not a full width over. I'm not sure what the exact dimension is, but yes, the truck, there is space, in that loading area, there is space between the truck and the building to unload the truck in real life.
Or will the truck be unloaded on the south side?
You can unload them uniformly.
Okay.
You can't unload one side completely and then...
Oh, I'm sorry, so there's loading and unloading from both sides?
Correct.
Okay.
So the loading on the south side would actually take place in the driveway area, but, okay.
It's better than the Atlantic Avenue.
So the truck will be up here?
Which is where it's been done historically.
And they're going to be loading from both sides?
So, excuse me, you just said this is quite accurate, the location of the truck, so can you show me what you just said?
The truck is actually, would actually be positioned slightly to this way here.
Okay, so slightly to the...
Yes, but pulled down the same distance, still in past the corner of the building.
So still in this location, but just over the, and the forklift will be going this way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so, and to repeat, loading both sides of the truck, all to take place, try and keep it as closest to the proposed building as possible to maintain accessway. Just a...
The reinforced, let me rephrase that, the unreinforced section of pier is 20 feet wide. The trucks cannot be out on that.
That's 20 feet from the property line?
The can't, the reinforced, the, let me rephrase that, the unreinforced section of pier is 20 feet wide. The trucks cannot be out on that.
That's 20 feet from the property line?
From the edge of the pier.
From the edge of the pier, yeah.
Where's the edge of the pier?
Okay, so, if I'm looking at the plan here, that's, that's sort of a rectangle that is off of the side of the building?
The edge of the old pier, would you like me to?
Sure, sure.
This is the edge of the pier.
Okay.
The dark line is the edge of the pier.
Yeah, so the first 20 feet is what he's referring to.
First 20 feet over here is unreinforced.
Okay.
Between the edge of the pier and the edge of the reinforced pier.
So, if I draw a line around here, this is reinforced, this is where the truck will be?
Yes. The truck cannot be out here because it's not adequate to support the truck.
Okay.
So, there's always going to be a 20-foot lane on the truck.
And Atlantic Edge doesn't get any truck traffic?
They do, but they will also.
Not that size.
Not that size, but they'll also be able to unload in that area. This is the unreinforced.
Yes. And by unreinforced, we, what are the limits of?
It's, it's a box truck limits, I forget what the, what the tonnage is.
Okay.
Could a truck for Atlantic Edge drive on the unreinforced section?
Yeah.
Legally, I mean safely?
Yeah.
There's smaller trucks.
Yeah. All, none of his trucks are, are heavy enough to be a problem. Because they, none of the Atlantic Edge building is on the higher strength pier except.
Well, the, the building is irrelevant, it's the trucks getting to it.
I understand.
Right.
They're all pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks.
Yeah, yeah, those are.
You're lobster trucks, you know, trucks picking up lobsters. What, I mean, we don't have a lot of trucks coming and going, this isn't a regular occurrence, there isn't always a truck parked there. This is going to be a common loading and unloading area, and one of the goals by putting this here is it'll eliminate a lot of the congestion that currently takes place. UPS, when they come down, they back right out in the middle of the traffic area, and we're going to put them there. When they come to pick up lobsters from Atlantic Edge to be shipped, what, you know, any, any deliveries.
So, if you've got a truck there, and Atlantic Edge has a truck that comes in, they're going to be parked side by side?
That won't happen, that won't happen five times a year, when, when there's conflict.
So, you won't be able to unload if they have a truck parked there?
My point being, there, that, there are so few deliveries, and, and the duration of the delivery is so short-lived that there will not be conflict.
Okay. So, also, nobody else can get into the site if that situation occurred?
No, no.
Because you'd have two trucks parked side by side.
Well, they can't be.
No, no, they would be parked side by side, they would never.
They'd be on the reinforced pier. It's still at 20 feet of traveling down.
You've always got a clear lane, Tom.
Right, there's nothing in that lane.
Actually, you wouldn't, because if you've got, if the truck, you need access to one side of the truck. Between the building and the truck, you're going to have a forklift, right?
30 seconds.
Well, for whatever time, the truck, for as long as the truck sits there, whether the forklift's running or not, but he has to position himself so that a forklift can unload from, from that side. And then you have another forklift, or the same one alternating, goes around to the other side of the truck. So, you need access on that side. And granted, there's not a lot of traffic coming in.
Are you saying the forklift is going to tie up traffic?
No, I'm saying if, if Atlantic Edge gets a delivery, and you said that's going to be a delivery area.
But worst-case scenario, you'd have one 18-wheeler, two forklifts in the 45-foot area, which should be sufficient, shouldn't it?
Right, you've got 45 feet to.
I'm just trying to understand the operation, that's, you know.
Yeah, maybe in a situation like that, Tom, if Atlantic Edge gets a delivery at that time, since their trucks can go out on that other section, they wouldn't plug up that area.
Or could they use the other entrance?
They could get there the other way.
They could use the other entrance, they could go on down to Atlantic Edge.
That's what they would.
Yeah, they could, they don't have to stop there to unload, but somebody made a comment that Atlantic Edge would be unloading in that area also.
They could, if there wasn't already a truck there, and they told me they would.
Why would they, why would they unload there instead of going right up to the building?
Because we're trying to eliminate congestion on the pier.
Just to give them options.
And if there were a problem that you found, you'd have a conversation with your landlord, wouldn't you? And have that resolved?
And I think that's one of the things that you're missing, as Robbie says, everybody does work to get down there. I mean, you know, 99% of the traffic is fishermen. They know the trucks come and go, they, you know, yes, access is one way, but if it's blocked off for some reason, they go up the other way. I mean, it's, it's not like the byway where you get up there and you're, you know, UPS is parked in the middle of the road, and traffic is stopped for an hour while it makes all those deliveries. I mean, it works, and it'll continue to work.
Tom or Bill, just for the benefit of the board, how does the, how, how does the town handle any type of liability? For, for example, if there are vehicles of excess weight and load that, that come through? I mean, you mentioned signage, you mentioned marked lanes, is, is this a, is this a concern that, that you have, or do you feel that, again, this is so minimal and so, so rare, that it doesn't make sense to design for the maximum worry?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, it certainly is a concern. I mean, that's one of the main concerns for doing this project, is that we couldn't insure it anymore. So, I mean, that, that was a driving force here. So, I mean, it, obviously it is covered under our general liability and our, our property and casualty insurance. The, the tenants have insurance for the belongings that they have, and so, it's pretty heavily insured, and it's definitely a concern to ours.
I think to address the point that you were getting at, Mike, though, yeah, it's insured, and we have insurance, our insurance comes down and inspects the site, and if he doesn't like what he sees, he says, fix this. One of the things they said was, get rid of this building, so we're not going to insure it anymore. That's what sort of started all this back in 2010. But, I think to address your issue, if he comes down there and he sees some situation that he thinks is increasing his risk, he's going to tell us to fix it.
Okay. So, again, go back, going back to what we had said a while ago, this plan represents a compromise. You could reinforce the entire deck and be able to put an airplane on it for a particular cost. Not wanting to incur that cost, this is a compromise plan that, between yourself, the workshops, and the tenants, is one that you feel is workable and safe.
Absolutely. The, the big picture here is, we had this freezer building that was harmed by Atlantic Avenue, and the trucks were unloaded even harder by Atlantic Avenue, that is, basically in the sidewalk. And it was a problem for you, it was a problem visually, I mean, I mean, you know this, you drive by there every day, you see those trucks parked right out there. And so, when, when we took those buildings down and started to look at, well, what do we want to do? As Tom said, the overriding thing is get them out of the front of that, that area, get them alongside the building. And we're fortunate, actually, in that, that, as, it's a little hard to tell by this, by this drawing, but all but a very narrow section of the building is actually on, not pier, but, but ground. So, we don't have an issue with load bearing on the, on the building in itself, and the only issue with load bearing was, was in that loading area alongside, so when we rebuilt that section of the pier, we rebuilt it to the stronger standard.
I think we've beat up a lot on access and traffic.
Except for the issue of getting them back out again.
Okay.
And you're, you're selling, saying that a semi truck can back out and not get onto Atlantic Avenue, and get turned around and head north on Atlantic Avenue.
That's what I'm saying, yes. Even knowing that, that buffer area that's.
What does that, what does, and what does that mean, with that buffer area? What is that?
Well, you have to have a 15-foot buffer between the street and a, and a different use, and technically, that's there already. There's 15 feet between the road and where the proposed lines of parking spaces would be on here right now. There's, there's certainly that and more. So, we've actually increased the setback from the street considerably. And, I mean, I'm not a truck driver, but I'm, I'm assured that the truck drivers could back out through that open area towards the, almost over towards the, the ramp area, and turn around and drive back out that way.
Was this anything that was, was discussed with Terry Layton when he put?
Oh, sure.
The plan together, and Terry drew this up, and, and again, that was a criteria he felt comfortable meeting?
Yes, that was a priority, that it had to be able to do that, yeah.
And even with that parking space there for Harbor Bait that's on the corner?
You know, there may be, there may be situations, Chris, where somebody may have to move a pickup truck to, to get it to do that, and they, they do that every day anyway.
Okay.
So, space is available.
That just made it, to me, seem a little tight, but yeah.
They, they do it now with empty trucks.
Yeah.
They turn around in there, they back, they, they pull down in there, back out, they back down, they pull out. They, it's very maneuverable with what they've got now, and there's going to be more space once the cooler is moved into its permanent location.
I know there had been some discussions about providing even additional space, possibly reorienting, and by doing that, there are further compromises about losing parking, and while you may be gaining maneuverability, again, you've, you're comfortable that not only does this satisfy the, the code, it also meets the, the requirements of, of safe vehicular access?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, one, one data point for that is, is actually, if you go back to the Garland Turgeon report, the $2.6 million, they proposed a number of buildings to be rebuilt on the Fish Pier, and they were lined up, as you see these, they actually had additional buildings that filled in between the proposed building and the Atlantic Edge building, but they were in this orientation.
Didn't know that, okay. Yes?
Is there a possibility to put something to vote for the town on reinforcing more of this side of the pier, so these trucks could come down further?
It was a question that was asked at the pre-AP meeting, and I believe the answer that we were told was that anything was possible, it was just merely a matter of cost, and with the plan that was done some eight to 10 years ago, it was in the, the millions, and while it may be desirable at some future point, this, again, represented the best compromise. Is, is that fair, Tom?
Yes, that's fair, yeah.
I think, Donna, to maybe expand on that a little bit, I think it is the sense of the current select board, now, we won't be the select board when this happens, probably, but it is certainly the sense of this current select board, that anytime there is future work done on the Fish Pier, we would reinforce it to the higher standards if, if it was going up, if that was part of it, because it just makes all the sense in the world, you want, you want to have it even more loaded. Now, whether the town is for that or if they want to go ahead of that, that's beyond the question.
Do we have to actually accept the application? It's been, at the end, that was already done. Yeah.
And then they can go into that.
Maybe I'll mention that. Through the issue. Because there's several things.
And then you just.
We'll be back down until they come down, he's going to go out, he's going to go left or right as we choose.
Okay. Any other questions about traffic and access?
Now, I'm a little concerned about how this truck is going to back out, because depending on what time of night this truck is going to be backing out, there's going to be a lot of backup noise as it comes down where these parking spaces were. Is that, am I understanding? That this truck is going to be backing out like this?
Yes.
That's going to be, depending on what time in the night it's going to be backing out, that could be a little disturbing.
Do, do semis?
Would you like an honest response to that?
Sure.
This is a fish pier, I mean, the fishing business operates 24/7. It's, it's been a fish pier for at least 35 years that I know of, there has been constant activity over there. I mean, we're not changing anything. We, we try to minimize our hours of operation, but bait has to get delivered when the boats land. Yes, there will be some noise emanating from the Fish Pier after hours. I sympathize with Donna, but there is going to be some. We, we will do everything we can to minimize it, but yes, a truck backing up may create some noise. She's the only person, only one in the town, only one in that area that has made any issue of the noise. Captain, we had no complaints from Captain Fishes, no complaints from any other neighbors. Well, Claudia Cop and Dirkly across the street did have some concerns, but for the most part, we've tried to minimize the noise, we've taken her complaints into consideration and done what we could against our better judgment. I don't, if, I don't think we can say there's not going to be any noise there.
I think this is one of those spots where you say, here's one of the concessions. You know, a, a lot of what I've heard is that the loading and unloading of the trucks was very loud, the forklifts themselves, but by putting them on the southerly side, we've minimized that. The, the trucks idling out by the street was a concern, we've minimized that.
Got rid of it.
We've got rid of it, yeah. The fact is, when a truck backs out, it's probably going to have backup, you know, beeping sounds as it pulls out. It, I mean, it's going to. We couldn't get everything, and we tried to minimize it as much as possible. It's considerably better, but it won't be a silent fish pier.
How did the, how did the trucks turn around previously? Do they back down the same way?
Because of Catholic Church, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I was just thinking that if they backed up the other way, it might be quieter. I mean, I, I am very.
If you can't back up that, that embankment to go south on that.
Oh. I just have to be located diagonally across the street, X, Y, W.
The truck doesn't have a backup alarm either, it just backs out.
Oh, you don't think it has an alarm?
It does not have a backup alarm.
Oh, well. And you know, it's not any noise during the day, I, I don't really, that doesn't disturb my business alarm, it's just that my business is based on sleep, so I'm very anxious about nighttime noise. And I, and I have to say that, I have to say that, you know, these people, that Chuck and Jean have been, you know, very cooperative, because, you know, I voiced some concern, and soon after that, it really became very, very quiet. And, and I don't know what they did, I thought they changed their whole operation, I saw the deliveries happening during the day. And, you know, it's very appreciative for all of those efforts, because I don't really want to be selfish here either, I'm just hope, wishing that there could be some kind of a win-win, so we could both stay in business and profit and prosper. And it, it looks like, you know, I, I, I think, you know, it looks, it's pretty good, I think there's going to be quite an improvement. And, so, I'm just, you know, asking these questions because, you know, it's always interesting to minimize, if it's possible.
I, I respect your feelings, and, and thanks for your comments, and the Fullers, and Tom, thanks for the, the interchange. I know this has been a little bit lengthy, but I think it's an important issue, and I'm, I'm glad we've been able to at least discuss it and, and hear it openly. And as, as we've started off by saying, this plan represents a, a compromise, and, and hopefully, it's the, the best compromise, just for the time. That said, is there any other questions about parking or traffic access? Shall we move on? Let's move on then to parking layout and design. And just, the plan reflects adequate parking for the commercial structures, correct?
Correct.
And there has been discussion about colors being used to differentiate parking. We've seen fabulous work done by our Public Works Director in terms of laying out parking, and I have no doubt that this will be striped and, and looking fabulously.
So, but what's going to be striped is actually just the parking spaces?
Well, at, at this point, we have, we have talked about color coding the parking spaces for the different businesses. That doesn't mean down the road, we might not consider other options designating, you know, danger areas where the forklifts go and things like that, but that hasn't been determined yet. I mean, we'll make it as clear to the general public, what's the public part of the pier, what's the commercial part, so that hopefully we'll minimize any liability, as Mike was saying. But at this point, I mean, we've just focused on the parking spaces themselves. I'm sure that'll all become very apparent once this building's there, and you see the flow of traffic and pedestrians, and how they're using the site, what will need to be done at that point.
Where do the pedestrians go when they go onto this site?
Some of them go down on the public part of the pier, which is on the north side Some of them go down on the public part of the pier, which is on the north side of Atlantic Edge, although it's very shallow there at low tide, so there's not a lot of, not a lot of fish in there. Some of them actually go off the end of the pier where that 400 square foot ice building is. That's actually Harbor Bait's business, but I think, I think Harbor Bait's been generous enough to let people use that at times under that loading and unloading. I think Kettlefish did the same thing. They also use the town dock where the Harbor Master boat is and the pump-out boat. They use that quite heavily. That's the one that's just above the word "boundary" on here. So primarily those spots, Tom.
And we've got public parking listed here on the plan. Will that also be, will that be posted with signage or?
Yep, yep.
It is now.
Okay.
Yep.
Continue.
Has done for a long time.
Great.
As public parking?
Yep.
I know it doesn't require it, but I appreciate, I like what you've said before about delineating a runway or pathway for the for the forklift and being able to show this is a commercial area, that this is where a forklift will be moving through. I'd love to see that.
When you ask where the public goes down there, they go anywhere, everywhere because, because it's a commercial area.
You're not giving them places they shouldn't be. I mean, we'll find them inside the cooler, probably.
But, but there are businesses down there, so people drive down to buy lobsters, they're doing it. And they wander around with their kids in their strollers. The public is everywhere. I think that's the answer to that question.
Well, that's, that's why I think what I'm getting at is maybe some delineation. And that's why I was asking what's going to be striped. Will there be a delineated area that the public can obviously see, this is where we're supposed to go and that's where we're not supposed to go?
Mike, this is a mountain sidewalk in the side tail.
But they don't go there either.
The public in general doesn't follow directions anyways. I mean, what it boils down to is having to be very careful about where we go. And that's one of the reasons we were so adverse to turning our backup alarm off on the forklift. You know, making ourselves as visible and audibly and visually as possible.
So are there, could there be a designated sidewalk to go from Atlantic Avenue down to, say, the town dock? And maybe one on the other side by the boat?
It just doesn't work.
I mean-
Not, not a sidewalk per se.
Well, painted.
Yeah.
But they don't, as Robbie says, they don't walk on the sidewalk on Atlantic Avenue.
They walk on the other side more than they walk on the sidewalk.
Well, that's because the sidewalk's on the wrong side of the street for a lot of those activities.
I think, I think to answer your question, it's TBD. I mean, we'll see once this is up and running again where the flow of traffic is. And if it makes sense to, you know, paint certain areas such as caution areas for forklifts or certain areas for public use, then, you know, we'll consider that at that point. But we haven't been considering that for this.
It leads nicely into the next section of the, of the findings of fact, which is pedestrian access, which states a system of pedestrian ways within the development that's appropriate. And because you're inviting the public to this through signage and restrooms, it really is a melange or mixture of commercial and, and, and public. So I guess I go back to the statement earlier about liking the runway or the forklift type area. I don't know how we, certainly, I wouldn't want to limit you by saying, let's put in a strip that says, this is where the forklift is going to travel in, in running your business in six months. Do you say, gosh, we meant, we gotta do a 10 feet over here? So how, how would you recommend how we address that?
I would, if you want to take a stand on that, and, and I would suggest you do it the other way around. And that suggests that there is a pedestrian, mark a pedestrian walkway along the south edge of the pier and leave the rest of it for the commercial.
Except the public bathrooms are kind of right in the middle of the site. So you're going to, you're obviously telling people, wander around the site till you find the bathrooms.
Well, you're right, it is closest to the sewer hookup and it is over in the area by-
Yeah, there, I mean, there could be, certainly one on the south makes sense. There could also be one on the north by the, by the launching ramp as well. And that would, that would lead you to the public restrooms. But, but my point is, I think it would make more sense, I mean, this is, this is a commercial fish pier. It is open to the public. And you're right, it's, there's mixed use here, and so we have to be careful about that.
Does it have to be open to the public?
Yes.
Because it's public property?
It is public property, yes.
They don't have to have access to it every inch of the town?
No. Technically, the town could declare that the public was not allowed this and only the tenants. But we've got retail sales of Atlantic Edge, so you've got to allow the public to drive on and buy stuff from there. And two, as, as a selectman, I, this should be open to the public. The ramp should be open to the public, the pier should be open to the public. So the question is how to do that safely. And again, I would come back to putting in areas where it is okay to walk rather than putting in areas where you want to limit the forklift. Because the forklift, there are going to be times in the forklift, I would presume, we're going to go a lot of different places. So I wouldn't want to require that a forklift be constrained to some alley that's marked. I would much rather that the pedestrians be constrained to a safe walkway.
Well, I like the idea about the south side, especially because it's a no parking zone.
Right.
Makes sense.
Does that, is that amenable to your plan as a, as a condition?
Sure.
The board like that?
Well, yeah, let's continue on. I think we can-
Sure.
Deal with that, though.
Okay. Any other questions about pedestrian access? Or too much pedestrian access? All right, next on to building. And we talk about building placement. And setbacks and alignments. Let's just go ahead and, let's just go ahead and start with that at the beginning. Again, from what I hear, what you, what you've said, and also the information that you've just recently said, which is that when a professional design firm had looked at redoing this, this property, they actually cited it on, in a similar footprint.
Very similar.
Yep. This is, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the Garland Turgeon and, and this was their phase two building, which is almost identical to where we have our building. In fact, we moved the building back off away from Atlantic Avenue further than this building.
Questions about building placement? Okay. Entrances, they're oriented to the street. Parking justifies the approaches. That seems to match our code. Building illumination. We've had some discussion about this. While the plan doesn't specifically call out any particular type of fixture, the plan, or plans to comply with the existing lighting plan and code for the town. That's, great. There are no drive-through facilities planned or otherwise stated?
Drive-through service?
Yeah.
Red snow cone?
Heck of a snow cone. Storage of material? I understand there is no outdoor storage of material?
That's correct.
Great. Yes.
Storage of material, like, the question come, that I have, is there, will there be any oil tanks? Are you all propane or use any heating oil?
There'll be propane for furnace in the building.
And where's that tank going to be?
Probably along the north side, I would expect.
I don't really see a place for it on the north side.
Refrigeration closet?
It's got to be outside the building. Depending on the size, it may have to be 10 or 15 feet from the building. A hundred gallon.
I see here on the third page of the first floor plan, where it shows refrigeration equipment. And I put that next to the initial plan. That shows an area where there's no parking. That's between-
Mike, can you do me a favor and tell me what the number is in the lower right? Because people's packets might not be set, this ain't set up.
A210. A210. Great.
Question, okay.
So if I'm reading this correctly, by looking at large plot plan, I see no parking between two BMS spaces and three AD spaces. Am I correct? And in that space, that is where the refrigeration equipment is located. And you're saying that there may be tankage, propane tanks in that area?
Yep.
But you do show a parking space in front of that garage door for the secure storage.
For the secure storage.
Well, here's a, you've got a garage door here, that's refrigeration. That man door, and then that parking right here.
I think that garage door is that open space between the Atlantic Edge parking spaces and the PWA of Loop Bay Marine Services. That's why there were two spaces left open there.
Yeah, but you've got two, you've got two garage doors and a personnel door.
That's for that one, yeah, yeah.
I have a second, it's a good orientation.
There are a number of places, you know, to be honest, no. I have a pinpoint of where it should go. Given the curtain, I mean, we're talking a 24-inch diameter hang.
Okay.
You can go adjacent to mechanical room. The handicapped guy is going to be coming up there. You've not got a parking coming out close to the building anyways. You could go east of the refrigeration closet.
Between the garage doors.
They're called a freezer entrance.
Yep.
Yeah, you can put it a lot of places, you're just going to have to put bollards around it by law, so.
Yeah.
I think it should be shown on the plan.
Okay. The only, the only other thing about that is that I see it, it asks that there's a visual buffer sufficient to minimize or impact on budding residential use and users in a public way. Can we agree or be amenable that we ask, under a condition, that some type of screening or buffer is, is provided? That's, that comfortable addressing?
Is this what we're talking about?
I don't-
Is this what we're talking about?
You mean like a lattice for a box or something just-
Which residential area is going to see that?
I don't think it's a big deal.
Chris, John, do you feel it's a big deal to state it as a condition to have screening or buffering around the tank or?
Well, will there be screening or buffering around the refrigeration equipment?
Yes.
So if you put it adjacent to the refrigeration equipment, you're putting, what, two more foot of screen?
Well, I wouldn't want to be in the same, same closet as-
You can't put it in a closet.
Okay. Yeah, it's got to be outside. But I mean, outside, yeah.
12 feet high, you know, or, you know, it's-
Yeah, but I'm saying if you put it, if here's the refrigeration closet and you put it outside adjacent to it, is my next question, seems pretty easy to just enclose that as well.
It's, 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 anything's normal, some condition, the appropriate screen out, anything can be done.
Well, let's bring-
I think what you need to do is show it on the site plan and tell us how you're going to address it. And related to that is, are you going to, do you have a dumpster? Does anybody on the fish pier have a dumpster?
Atlantic Edge does.
They do. So is it a big one? Does Giles have to come in and empty it with her?
They do.
And their truck is small enough, though, so it's not a weight problem on the pier? Okay, but you won't have one?
We have no intention of having one. If we have one, it will be inside our work area.
Okay. Okay, no dumpster.
Okay. Done with storage of materials. Sewage disposal. You're complying with all methods of sewage disposal.
Town sewer.
Great. Okay. That's handled. Utilities, utilities are sufficient?
Yes, they are.
Natural features. How are you maintaining or preserving the natural feature of?
We're not touching them.
I guess that would be minimizing that.
We've limited that.
Okay.
They haven't changed the position of the ocean.
That's right.
Thanks, Chris. Is, are there any efforts on water quality protection in terms of mitigating stormwater runoff? Or is there, is there anything that's being done? For example, the, the roof that's draining, are there going to be gutters, downspouts? Is that going to be directed anywhere or?
It's all hardscape.
Okay, so it's, even if it does, it's all going-
You can direct it a lot of places, but it's all hardscape.
It all ends up in the ocean, eventually.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you've just got sheet drainage over the whole site?
Jody's grading the properties to account for that so that it would run off towards the-
And not pool.
The boat ramp, so it wouldn't pool. So he's, he's got that factored in.
Okay. Other than ripe red fish, are there any other hazardous, special or radioactive materials that are going to be handled?
No.
No, okay. Our shoreline relationship. We're not adversely affecting the quality of water or the shoreline. And the development is not immediately visible from a great pond, river, or stream. I think we'll all agree that the applicant has capacity on solid waste management. Disposal of all solid waste, either that's going down the sewer or you had said that's going to be privately taken care of inside your building. Do you have floor drains?
The, within the, the site has drains in the deck.
Site has drains, but there would be none in the building?
As far as the cooler, no, there are not floor drains. But the, but the, as far as flushing the cooler, that comes out to a drain that is in the deck.
And that just goes down and out?
Yes.
It's as the fish came from, I guess.
We have no, no historic or archaeological resources in the area. There is no floodplain management. This is not part of RAB 27, so we don't have to conform to those design standards. And the last is any off-site improvements. Not limited to roads, intersections, signalization sidewalks, or drainage shall be installed at the applicant's expense. I can't think of what that may or may not be. We reached the end of our findings of fact.
I didn't hear anything about signs, is that not in there?
Jeff, where's signage? Signage comes under the-
Yeah, I'm, which chapter entails with signs? Anything that did belong to vehicles with the code.
Well, in terms of signs, yes.
And type.
We have shown you location of proposed. That was on your, your lighting and signage page in your packet.
Right.
I think it's also proposed wording, if I remember correctly.
And while the elevation doesn't show signage, it does show, it represents clavards down below and shakes up above. Is the town planning on continuing in that direction?
It depends on the cost.
Wait a minute. No. If it says it's clavards and shingles, then that's what it's got to be unless you come back to the board. You can't just say, well, I mean, you could say, what if the cost comes in too high and you decide to put up, you know, T-111? Or, you know, used vinyl? Well, it was cheap, that's all we go for.
I would not meet the land use codes at Loop Bay Harbor.
Yes, that's enough it would.
Well, right, yeah, does the order-
But it gives the board, we have the discretion to, that's why it's in here as part of the application.
What does the order say about?
Actually, I don't agree.
Exterior, yeah.
Because it, one of the, one of the criteria is it has to be architecturally compatible.
I think the clavards are architecturally compatible.
I personally find- T-111 is what's down there.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. But if, if you're representing that, it's going to be clavards and shingles, that's what we would expect to see, so that's fine.
Okay.
Why would you be so picky about that when the code allows architectural harmony? If it meets the code, whether it be T-111, shakes, clavards, or whatever, that should suffice. And I, and I would agree with the chair of the select board. I really don't think you have the authority to tell him that he has to designate one or the other or the, or the third or fourth option. I think you're being a little picky on.
And just for Kelly's benefit, that was Bruce Anger, former selectman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. You arrived, you arrived late, but have been noted. I think it would be great if there is conformity between the drawing. I think that represents, well, I think you've shown a desire to make this a pleasing building. I hope that it goes forward, but I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I would like to see it represented if possible. And I think you are being good stewards of the, of the property. I think that's your intent, if I'm, if I'm correct.
It is. I mean, I can certainly submit a revised drawing for you. That's not a problem.
But that would prohibit us from doing shakes if we wanted.
Yeah, I-
Sure.
I don't think we've really determined exactly, you know, it is going to be based on what, you know, what Jody comes up with, what, what the contractor comes up with.
I mean, we hear what you're saying, we'll take that into consideration.
And Jeff, when you do inspections, you, again, make sure that it meets the applicable code? Which is-
Yeah, and again, it wouldn't have anything to do with signage.
Exactly. We don't see on our record that we have accepted this application as being complete. Jeff, in your review and opinion, has the town met the standard of having a completed application?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the application as being complete?
So I'm...
And second?
Second.
Any discussion on the completeness?
There are several things that were not shown on the plan, and I think they're not necessary to be shown, I think we should just formally waive those. This, the plan, the plan is complete, and just say we're waiving certain required items.
Sure. Do you want to do that after, or as part of the acceptance of complete?
That's up to you.
Why don't we go ahead and take a vote on the acceptance, and then we'll mention the waivers? Are you good? All in favor of a completed application? All right. Thompson, since you've got a list, why don't you mention the waivers?
I'm not sure about easements, I don't know if there are any on the property, so. That one, utility usage, I think we can waive that because they're all public utilities, and they've been using the same ones for a long time. So I think we can waive the requirement that they submit a detailed plan about the volume of sewer and water that they're going to be using.
Okay.
And I, I think you mentioned that there's a catch basin on the site?
There's a sewer pump, sewer pump, is that what you're referring to?
No, catch basin for storm water.
Storm water drain?
No, there, there's a provision for drainage through the deck, through the field.
That's what we're talking about.
There's a storm sewer that comes down.
We can waive that, and there's no incinerator on the property, so.
Okay.
Just those items. I think they've submitted everything else, and there's no reason to submit those.
Okay. Jeff, shall we formally add the waivers?
Sure.
Let's take a, let's hear a motion to accept the waivers of those five items that Tom has mentioned?
Easements, utility usage, catch basins, incinerators.
That would be four. Very good. All make a motion, second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Waivers? Let's see. Why don't we next then take a motion, oh, next thing. We've had a detailed review of the findings of facts, there's a couple of points here that I've made notes on, that I think are for some conditions. Is there any abutter or anyone else in the audience that would like to make questions or comments about the application? Hearing none. From, looking at my notes, I see one, two, three points where I'd like to have conditions of approval be added. The first is about signage, that signage be added, that no trucks, no loaded trucks over an appro, over an appropriate weight.
There's already signed for it.
I'm sorry?
There's already signed with that.
Okay.
With no truck period.
Great, well, let's, we'll make sure that that's a condition, that a weight limit sign be on the, on the plan and on the property. The second was to add defined walkways, pedestrian walkways to the north and south edge of the property, for reasons that were mentioned before. And the third was to delineate where on the plan propane storage would be with appropriate visual buffers sufficient to minimize impact. Great.
Going back to signs, I didn't, I don't, you don't really have a plan for signs that I've seen. Can we have a sign on the front of the building, or someplace on the Atlantic Avenue, so I just saying there are public restrooms in the building?
I have addressed that on the signage page.
There is a sign.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just not shown on the building elevations. It's all right, if it's, if it's in there and you've done it, that's fine.
I think it is in there, Tom, here it is, on page 10. Fish Pier proposed exterior signage. And yeah, there'd be a big sign that says Boothby Harbor Fish Pier, and smaller signs that say Atlantic Edge Plaza, Harvard Bay, Boothby Marine Services. I think we need to add a launching ramp and public restrooms to that, that we talked about.
Right. That's all.
And some of those are existing signs already, but...
So if I go back to the three conditions in reverse order, the designation for storage and the buffer of the tank, the walkways, and the signage, adding weight limit sign, launch ramp, and public restroom signs, those three conditions. Okay. Hang on to that for a second. Are we in favor of, can we take, take a vote to add those conditions of approval to the plan? All in favor? None opposed? Okay, correct. Let's see.
I'd vote without the conditions. I think that's within the town perspective, and I think they would put something that they would be proud of, the town would be proud of. You know that the signage has not been finalized, they need to get going, and I prefer to have a vote of confidence in the town management that they'll act appropriately, solid stay on this.
Okay. Very good. That said, entertain a motion that the applicant has demonstrated that this proposal meets the criteria set forth in chapter 170, Article Six, Section 170-69 of the Town of Boothby Harbor zoning ordinance. Do I hear a motion?
I still move.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion about the application and its proposal? Hearing none? Take a vote. All in favor of approving the application as submitted with the conditions attached? All in favor? Opposed?
We're abstaining.
Abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. We have three, 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 four, and one abstention.
Right.
Very good. Based on these above findings of facts and conclusions, supporting information, testimony and evidence submitted, we find that the board approves this application with the conditions set forth by a vote of three with one abstaining. Very good.
Thank you.
Sure. That closes, that closes this very short portion of the, of the Planning Board application meeting. Discussions about the land use code and any review for further amendments or discussion about land use code? Any ideas, gentlemen?
Jeff, do you have any thoughts in that regard? We had spoken about making a review.
Yeah, again, I encourage you guys to look through Article Four and Five of Chapter 170, and some suggestions, and we'll come up with a list and meet at a workshop and discuss whether the board as a whole wants to pursue changes.
Were there any that you see from your vantage point as CEO that would benefit from clarification, modification of changes?
I did last year. I, we had approximately 30 changes that I proposed last year. After that, it's, this, those small housekeeping, really. But if anything more substance that you guys want to approach, like I said, compile the list and sit down and talk about how you all feel.
Jeff, are there any applications pending for the November 13th meeting?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, we still have some time.
Yeah.
Not much, but some time. Why don't I make the recommendation that the board review Articles Four and Five and Section 170, and why don't we come on the next meeting, which is scheduled on November 13th, and plan to discuss our review, invite the public, and we'll, we'll use that as a, as a place to start? Okay? Does that seem fair?
If you want to forward those to him for the meeting, you can try to, you can set them up in some way. Those are worth it.
Sure. We have, we have meeting minutes in front of us for the October 9th meeting. I have not had the opportunity to review these, so I'm not comfortable bringing them up to, to vote. If it's okay with the indulgence of the board, I'd like to just table this for, for the next meeting. Is that fair? Okay, great. Are there any other general discussions from either the board or any audience members which seem to have left us?
I actually have a question for the planning board, if you don't mind me asking.
Sure, would you please state your name clearly for the, for the record, and for Kelly Biggs, who is not here?
Hi, Mike. I'm Katrina Clark, I'm a resident of Boothby Harbor, and I'm a reporter for the Boothby Register. I'm just curious, the Board of Selectmen appoint the planning board members, they can approve or disapprove any application, yet the Chairman of the Select Board was here giving a proposal, did that affect your decision at all? Did you feel it was a conflict of interest? I'm just curious if you felt there was a bit of a conflict there.
That's, that's a fair question, and if I may at least start the response on that. I had similar concerns about the appropriateness and any type of conflict. I spoke with Becky Seal of Main Municipal, she is their chief legal counsel, and Becky has held a number of training sessions that I and other members of the board have, have attended. So not only is she a resource, she's turned out to be a helpful friend. And in her discussions, she had said that she found that there was no conflict, she said it may appear, and the board may feel it's a bit awkward, but that there was no direct conflict, and feeling that the town manager would be primarily presenting, removed any type of pressure or appearance, so I did not feel any undue pressure or appearance from, from the selectmen. Is there any other members of the board who wish to comment?
No, there's nothing on it. You sit here and see Jeff with his boss, and his boss has his boss here, and he's relaxed and calm and proceeding ahead. Why, why would we be?
No.
It is awkward, in a sense, because the selectmen do appoint the board members, and obviously can, but by regulation, they own the property, the town owns the property, so they are the formal applicant here. The tenants, the Fullers, were present, but they're taking a 20-year lease. It is unusual, I would think, and I think most of us observe that, but seemed strange, but it wasn't unduly awkward.
I'll, I'll just also mention that we've got the benefit of a professional code enforcement officer that provides us with a detailed amount of information, and his professional opinion, and the board relies heavily on our code enforcement officer for issues of conflict, and Jeff has, has also counseled us that this is all appropriate, and while it could appear to be awkward, I think we all made up our minds independently, and I think, I think the review went just fine. Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, or plans from the board?
Just a touch base, you know, tell Chris what you discussed.
Sure, Chris, we had mentioned that for the next meeting, November 13th, we plan to review Articles Four and Five, Section 170, and at that meeting, we'll discuss the, any changes, alterations, or modifications to the existing land use code. And in advance, it'd be helpful for Jeff, if we have any changes or suggestions, to forward them on to, to him prior to the meeting, so he can provide us with explanations or some type of research.
We have talked about preparing a formal checklist, which would be enclosed as an addendum for, used by future applicants.
For site plan review.
For site plan review, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, then, why don't we put our efforts into that, starting at the next meeting? Very good.
If we go through those articles, I think greater familiarization with those will allow us to create that checklist for.
Okay. Well, after nearly an hour and a half, I think we've done, we've done a bit of work. Hearing no other items before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Very good.
We're going to be all abstaining.